Mr. Johnson, Mr. Eastwood.
Here. Here. You can all stand.
The police is a fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do you think just a moment of silence, you think about your first responders, your military go home and run, those fighting on the border and those fighting in the fires out west. Just a minute if you want to start in Washington. All right, just a couple of housekeeping things. If you guys have cell phones, please make sure they are silenced for the meeting. If you would like to speak during the public comment, please be sure to state your name and your address. We will have a comment in the new business. Please keep that to, I'm going to give you two minutes to do that. A little housekeeping on the agenda. I am going to move item number six, which is the executive session. I'll move that down to business. Just I'm guessing some people here might be interested in this. So we're going to get to talking about that soon. So first thing on the agenda right now is the approval of payroll. I would take a motion to approve payroll dated zero one thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. The total amount of forty thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars with coordinated outships, split holdings and liabilities at nine thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents and incorporate this case document as well. Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Christopher.
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
Next on the agenda is going to be our approval of previous minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board of trustees meetings. First one is dated January first of sixteen of twenty twenty-five, regular trustees meeting in attendance for trustees Christopher Johnson and Eastwood, and also January first twenty twenty-two, sorry, January twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five special trustees meeting in attendance for trustees Johnson, Eastwood and Christopher. Second, discussion on the items.
Normally I'd like to have them individually approved, but we've put them up in the earlier years. It's just two of them that we're pretty much out of. That's all. Just I remember.
Roll call.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher.
Hi.
Next on our agenda is going to be purchase orders and trying to request the, Mr. Eastwood, do you have?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase order requisition dated one twenty-eight of twenty-five to the Department of Service, vendor is General Maintenance Service Company, descriptions of diagnostic work and repair costs to repair truck number three with running issues. The cost is three thousand dollars and it's coming out of the twenty thirty-one dash three three oh dash three two three dash zero 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 cost.
Second. Roll call, change discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher, do you have any?
I do not.
I do have a few. So the first one I have, I'd like to make a motion for a purchase order requisition. The department's going to be fire. The vendor is Medina County Emergency Management Agency, and this is going to be our twenty twenty-five countywide emergency management cost allocation. Total on this is three thousand and fifty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher.
Hi.
Next one I have, I'd like to make a motion for a purchase order requisition. This department is for fire. And it's Medina County Emergency Management Agency is the twenty twenty-five Medina Township All Hazards Team cost allocation. Total on this one is four thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher. Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
I'd like to make a motion for a purch- purchase order requisition. Department is Police, White House Solutions Group, LLC. It is our annual IT services, coming out of account two zero eight one dash two ten dash three one nine dash zero 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 zero. The amount is twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher.
Hi.
Next on our agenda is approval of accounts payable. I would like to make a motion to approve accounts payable dated zero one eighteen of twenty twenty-five to one twenty-nine of twenty twenty-five with fiscal check numbers three three nine six seven two three three nine eight two, or a total amount of four hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents and incorporate this one-page document as presented. Second, any discussion on this? Our big one on here is going to be the Medina Fire Department. So if you're wondering why it's four hundred thousand dollars, there you go. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher. Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
All right. Again, we're going to move the executive session towards the end of the meeting. Next is going to be Department Ed comments. Danny Carr.
Hi.
LA, no zoning.
Nothing.
Chief, please. It's easy. Anybody else want to forgive me? All right. So on to whole business. I'm going to need a police levy resolution and discussion. You're starting? So I am the police commissioner. At our last meeting, even beginning of the year, we've been discussing the needs of our police department. We're running a levy from two thousand and eleven, which will mean fourteen years that we have not passed a levy for the police department. Now, we've been able to put some band-aids on the police department with the safety services levy, and then something unexpected happened with COVID, and the government did give us a lot of money that we could use for that stuff with the COVID money. That is good. We used up now, and we just got done with new contracts. And one of the things that a lot of people are aware of is the cross and lateral movement of police officers. Their salaries going up, just basically like everybody's salaries are going up, so the cost of our police department is going up. And so we were been trying to forecast a good time, which is never really a good time to look at taxes and levies and stuff like that, but to take care of our township, we are up to nine thousand five hundred plus residents right now, probably four thousand homes and over four hundred and what was it, four hundred and fifty, almost five hundred businesses.
Somewhere almost five hundred businesses.
I'll teach you to silence your watch, too, Chuck. Two out of three. So discussing with the police chief and everything else like that, we were looking at what can we do to take our police department into the next decade or so. And that's where we've been in much discussion with what we can put on the levy and to see where we'd have to go. I don't want to, I didn't want to do something where we would have to come in with a levy every couple of years to try and take up the increases. We do have a safety services levy and an EMS levy that are coming up in two thousand and twenty-seven. And I would like to have the police department not be so dependent on the safety services levy because it's letting you know we can have a fire department contract with the city. And right now, we're taking, again, today, you saw four hundred and four thousand dollars of that levy is going towards our fire services. But the good thing is, in the last few years with our fire services, we've gone from doing normal working shifts, which people always thought we were twenty-four seven, to now having a department that it is twenty-four seven. So with that, the costs have gone up. Thus, it takes more from that levy. So that is where our decision-making was with, you know, proposing it to the residents on why we need a necessity for an increase and looking at putting it on to the ballot. Chief, do you have anything to add to that, or do we have more pencil numbers?
Yeah. We had, we're experiencing approximately a ten percent increase in calls for service. There have been a lot of times, we're still running with one officer on the road, and as far as I'm concerned, to service to every township resident, every business out there and have that. And not only that, the safety of my office, okay? I don't know if all of you are aware, in Medina County alone, okay, in twenty twenty-four, within four months, there's been four officer-involved shootings. That's kind of unheard, okay? Kyle County, that's pretty much a lot that happens over there, but you would never think that would happen in Medina County, okay? Now, a recent one was just up at our he's in, on Route eighteen, okay? I want to increase our services, grow residents, okay? We're going to increase everything with community interactions. We do a lot of that now, we're going to increase it. We can just a lot for the residents, okay? We, I have been in law enforcement for over thirty-five years. I came from Kyle County, okay, and police in Medina County is a whole lot different and a whole lot better, okay? We rely a lot on mutual aid out here, okay? We work so well with all the agencies in Medina County. However, when you have the experience that I have, you can never, ever rely on mutual aid, okay? I may have one officer here, all right, and we have, we have kidnapping, I mean, Amber Alert on Route eighteen. Who's protecting the township? Everybody was up there. So if something happened out here where you needed police services, it would have been tough by the zone to come up there, okay? So that's, that's pretty much, we want to increase the safety of a resident. That's my main objective out here. That's, that's why I'm the chief of police, okay? So everybody feels safe and secure in our community.
Mr. Christopher.
Uh, just a couple of points you sort of hit on, but regarding the safety service, we were paying two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for fire protection a couple of years ago, but we were only having protection from whatever, eight in the morning until eleven at night, five days a week. Now we have twenty-four seven, it's up a couple hundred thousand dollars, but you've got a lot better protection. So that's where that, that's why the increase is there. The, I was police commissioner a couple of years ago and ran on safety and fiscal responsibility transparency, and that's what we're doing here. The, we're not, as a society, we're not being safer today. As the Cleveland start to move out towards us, the Akron starts moving towards us, this kind of stuff, we have more crime here. And as the chief said, we have things that are happening, stabbings, whatnot, that police have to respond to. There's been shootings, and I'm talking about our police have, have to respond to these things. So this is something that I feel very strongly about in order to have our residents protected and our officers protected.
Mr. Eastwood.
I would, I would agree that our department has improved dramatically even since I got the ball. I think Chief Minnick brought morale back into the team. I think the team has refocused to how they can serve better, but the reality is, we were so understaffed when we started, that there was, there was a legitimate safety concern during different shifts. So we said, even as far back into twenty-two, that the focus would be to build the department, build the integrity, build the relationship, and make the numbers safe. And in order to do that eventually, we would need to have a levy. Here we are presenting a levy. The reality is, these are tough on everybody, and we know that. So while we're here and we want the very best, this is a situation where we can bring it to the people, and I believe that allows the people to intervene and to work accordingly. And I hope that they'll see it the way we're seeing it, but it's not our call to go out and spend your money. It's our call to lay everything out on the table, let you know that we're encouraged with what's happened here. We are not disagreeing that, yeah, it's going to cost some more money, but hopefully, and with the testimonies and what you've seen, what I've seen, what I've heard, hopefully it'll work out. All we can do is present it to the public and allow the public to make a decision. But we do have, I think, a significantly improved department, both in, you know, we talked about morale, but then we can talk about training, too. And those of you who have been around some of these meetings and seen how much he's brought to getting staff trained, which is something they were crying for when I first got here. Not crying, but it was, they needed to know that they could get that, and he's brought that to the table. So that being said, I think, I think it's, I think it's something the township can use, but I also think it's something that people have to, people have to be engaged with.
The only other thing I'd like to add to that, just, we're a unique township in the fact that we have two major freeway entrances into our township, here at Route Three and at Route Eighteen. We also have a mass of businesses along rural Route and Route Eighteen that make us a little bit more unique compared to other townships in the area. We also have seven police officers, regular officers. We have two sergeants, one detective, one retired, and one chief. So you can kind of see that our, our numbers are low, and then when you take a twenty-four hour day with all the different shifts, you can see how the math doesn't quite work with having a staff all the time with two officers. So again, those were the points that I made.
The other thing I'd like, Mr. Chairman, is that since the first conversation of the levy came out, I've gotten a couple of calls from some residents that were concerned. Some were all for it, some were concerned and questioning the need for it. What I've done is try to encourage them to come and speak and share, you know? I'm not trying, and I don't think any of us are trying to hustle something through. I think that transparency has been pretty clear the whole time. But I think it's also fair to have a, a listening ear for everybody in the neighborhood. And so I'm sure we may hear from some of them shortly, but at the end of the day, everybody matters. That's all.
Excuse me, can we ask a question? I think we have to wait.
When it gets to public comment?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I think we're separate. We can, we can. So at this time then, what's my resolution on this?
It's on there. It's, it's on, what's it going to say?
Oh, I was making for, Mr. Eastwood, that was it. I will move to adopt the line resolution number zero one two eight two zero two five dash zero one three, a resolution clearing it necessary to proceed with submission of the question of an additional tax levy of two and one-half mils per dollars of taxable value for police services as authorized by section five seven zero five point one nine J of the Alarve Ice Code to the electorism die attach it on the May sixth twenty twenty-five ballot and incorporate these three pages as reference. Second. Any other special? Roll call.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher.
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into public comment. I'd like to run our public comments to, two minutes for each person, just so we can get as many people as we can. Second. Your roll call.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood.
Hi.
Mr. Christopher.
Mr. Chairman, ask a question.
Sure.
Uh, we had residents sent me a email and asked if I would read it. Is that a permissible thing to do, either a public comment or trustee comment?
It's public.
Yeah, we can read comments.
We have two minutes.
And he's been wrote, somebody time you can stop when it's appropriate. This is from Brian Farren. Dear trustees, I've read about the police levy, police levy, and had a few questions. One, has an analysis been done to determine if it's more cost-effective to have Medina PD patrol the township such as what they do in Lafayette? Two, if not, it would seem to have economies of equipment, personnel, management, et cetera, that could still employ good officers and improve coverage. Three, based on past meetings, it would lift huge burden off of all of you in Medina Department, handled regarding insurance, payroll, scheduling, equipment, et cetera. As I recall, there were chronic issues with time cards, insurance, perhaps some of that is no longer an issue. This is not a criticism of the current police department. As you are aware, tax bills were just received. Ours went up over a thousand dollars. So passing a new levy is going to be tough. I know the majority of taxes goes to school district. Being retired on fixed income, any increase is painful. My brother lives in Lafayette since he's seen such consistent patrols and presence as with Medina PD. I think it makes sense to at least consider the option, having Medina PD cover our township. Will you put together requirements you feel justified to present, Chief Kenny, Mayor Hamoff? So an apples-to-apples cost comparison might be presented to the voters. I think it's wise and prudent stuff to help the voters decide. I'm sorry, I'm not making it to me, but would appreciate you considering this request. Brian Farren. Thank you for your time.
All right. So again, if you want to make a comment, please raise your hand, state your name and your address, that would be for the record.
Eileen Fazano, three nine three nine, Kelly Lane. My question is, on this levy, are you going to be able to hire more police, or do we have enough police? That's what I didn't understand when you were saying how many you had. It just, you said it so fast.
Right. So I mean, I don't like the, so the public comment, we don't usually respond as much as I think, but, but just, no, this is to increase the police force. So just that, you know, in order to bring on a couple more officers and to fill in the voids and have at least two deep, have like three, three more officers.
Okay. Because when you were talking, you were stating how many we had, and it seemed to be going so fast. That's why I asked the question, if we could get more help. Okay. Thank you.
Angela, what's your thoughts? Fortune's really. So I, I don't know the January sixteenth minutes, since I haven't been able to see them yet, if they reflect the entire meeting, like after you adjourned and still went on. And we discussed the levy. Hopefully they do. I know the fiscal officer was taking notes. But the thing is, is if you go back and listen to the meeting minutes when Chief Colonius was here, and the shifts changed to the eight-hour shifts, he very clearly said that there would be double coverage at all times, most of the time even triple coverage. So, and that that would not even increase overtime too much. It did a little bit, but certainly not to the tune of one point three million dollars. So, and then when Chief Minnick came in, he was able to change the shifts mostly back to ten-hour shifts with, it was a hybrid schedule, if you remember. The three of you were in office at that point. And with, there were some ten-hours, there were ten-hour shifts in there, there was twelve, a couple twelves and a couple eights, and he said that that would not sacrifice the coverage. We had, I believe, eleven officers, eleven people total at the time when, when Colonius was in. There's thirteen now. So I'm not sure why, why we're even talking about this. We shouldn't, that if the coverage wasn't going to be sacrificed, then why do we need more officers now to do what was, what they were able to do then? That just doesn't make any sense. And when, when you end the year with nearly a million dollars between just the safety service levy and the, and the police levy, and you've paid all your bills for this year, I, this is just not wise to be asking for the tax payers for more money. So that's, I, I think the levy is a bad idea for that reason. Now, moving on, there's also things that the township has to go back and, and collect because they've been paying opers incorrectly on cash outs, vacation cash outs, sick cash outs. That's all money that is due back to the township. You cannot, you cannot contribute that to.
To the taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Dave Crandall. I live in thirty-five, forty-nine, twenty-nine. I have a couple of comments. I just want to respond to that notion that minutes should include something that occurred after a meeting. I'm a corporate lawyer, been a corporate lawyer for over thirty years. I do corporate governance, I do boards, and I represent boards and pick minutes. Now, once the meeting's over, minutes are done. So just to set the record straight on that. I was also a prosecutor here in Medina a little while ago. I was there for about fourteen months, and I can tell you that what people have said about the migration of crime from other surrounding communities is absolutely true. And that's where I saw the biggest threat to Medina residents. It wasn't from Medina residents, but it was coming from Cleveland or coming up from Akron. Also wanted to address the notion that we rely on Medina City to provide our policing services. One of my greatest fears as a township residents is that residents, that we lose our independence as a township and we are annexed by the city. I think it's probably important for us to maintain a strong safety force and to, in order to maintain our independence long-term and avoid that adaptation.
Okay, nail my question back there. Um, is somebody else? Mr. Johnson?
I was supposed to stand.
Yeah, somebody else? Yeah, somebody else is in to me, so.
Jeff Johnson, thirty-nine, twenty, Huffman Road, been a resident on Huffman Road for forty-two years. People are quick to criticize and slow to praise. I commend this police chief for what he's brought, the people that he has promoted up from within and the growth that we have. And the police are not important unless something happens to you. On their way to this meeting, I just came from a viewing of one of our residents that passed in a traffic accident. And within minutes, there was response. And it performed CPR, brought her back to life. Unfortunately, she was on life support. And so now she's no longer with us. But the fact that we have people here that know us, that drive past our houses all the time, to stand for us, that's about town, and why are we moved here? Why we need a place? Fine, get rid of police department, yes, we will be annexed. And we don't have a fire department, which is such a big part of where folks are. Okay, that's gone. Please, whatever we needed, please bring up, maintain the integrity of our police department as they know us best and are committed to us. And you see, Chief Minnick's been bringing a lot of younger people to look after some of my old friends over here. So, so I appreciate all the records, one hundred percent, Sam had a great piece.
Tom Boer, thirty-seven, forty-seven, Watkins, Watkins Road in the township. I've been here, similar to him, forty-some years. I grew up in a township in Jogga County, Bainbridge. And as I sit here and think, as a seventy-year-old, I've been in township protection for at least sixty-five. I lived in Columbus for a while, another city elsewhere. I fail to understand what you're all worried about. I had a errant nine-one-one call made from my telephone by a gentleman with a hand that's bigger than a basketball player's hand, and the chief come to see us. Other than that, I can't remember anybody beating at my place. Nor am I interested in them coming to my place. I am not fearful of the people that live around me. And I'm not sure why you all are. I do not have any more money to plug into a program. I asked several years ago, when you merged the fire department, you should do the same thing with the police department. Cut a third of the expense out, you don't need another chief. But no, we didn't do it. It's time to do it, or forget it. It's just simply not something that's all that necessary. EMTs are, but, and, and the same thing's true on either end. Fire, EMTs or police, they're the last ones to show up. The party's already begun. And, and that's life, guys. So, I spend too much time in the wilderness, so I really don't think it's an issue. And I definitely don't need another raise in my property taxes. Unless you can figure out how, for us, plus sixty-five or plus seventy, to get the county to stop raising our values.
Anybody else? Back row?
Tom Ripan, four zero zero four, Delmar Court. My question is, the newspaper article I presented this levy in the paper quoted a one-mil levy at twenty-five dollars. Well, why wasn't it quoted at the two-point-five-mil levy that it should have been? To me, that's just kind of trying to keep a figure. And my second question is, this is a continuing levy? It's never gonna be brought up for a vote again? That's correct? And then, then what are we gonna hear when the safety service levy comes up? We're gonna hear we want another continuous levy that we don't have a chance to end? The voters have no chance to do anything with this in the future, as opposed to getting a chance to vote on it in five years? I, I just think that, and then the last thing is, we're quoted on a hundred-thousand-dollar home. Anybody here with a hundred-thousand-dollar home, raise your hand? Why can't that amount be quoted to us on a quote, on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar, at least? To me, that's trying to keep the figure low, to present a low figure to the voter. But like I said, the beginning article in the paper should have been right from the get-go for a two-point-five-mil levy, not a one-mil. Thank you.
Hi, Jim Trainor, four zero zero four, Remsen Road. I'm a retired policeman, I spent thirty-eight years retired out of the Cleveland Police Department. I've got to know these guys through the years. We're very lucky, we have the dedicated policemen that we have, the work in this department. We're also very lucky, we have the chief we do. Because I agree with these guys, they don't realize that the crime is coming out this way from the city. And we really need these guys. And one of the reasons you wouldn't wanna go to a, a bigger police department as far as combining police departments is because you want your policemen to be individually, to know your residents. Because you want them to be familiar with people. You wanna be able to drive down that street, and I said, and at the time, you wanna know who's supposed to be there, what time they're supposed to be there. And if something's out of place, they can stop and inquire what's going on, just in case there's a burglary going on or there's a robbery. You want, you, you wanna, you want your police to be familiar with everybody that's in your, in your township. I just think we're very lucky to have them. If it takes, it takes a levy to keep it strong, that's what we wanna do. Plus, not only that, you wanna keep your policemen safe. And you gotta remember something, when seconds count, you want police, you don't want police to be minutes away. You want them to be able to get there and back these guys up. So, my, my suggestion is, if you need your levy, if we can help you to do it, I think we should do it.
Tony Cologne, forty-three, fifty, Remsen Road. I've been involved in law enforcement for over forty-five years, I'm still involved in it. I, along with Jimmy, patrol the streets of Cleveland for forty-five, for thirty-five years. I do know the importance of having police around, quick response. Here in this township, we have one police officer, and he has to depend on outside agency to respond to him. If he wants to survive, he's not gonna be quickly rushing to your house if he has to wait for his backup. That means you're gonna have to wait. You do need police around all the time. Money is expensive, I know. I own a house, I pay a lot of money. But I'd rather have a house that's safe, a community that's safe, than having to worry that I have to wait on the city to send their policemen to assess me. The city of Medina is gonna worry only first of Medina. We have to worry about the city of our township. So, as long as it takes to feel safe, I know how to protect myself. How many of you know how to respond and handle when someone is breaking into your home? I know what I have to do. Are all of you trained, retrained, like I have been? I know how to do, how to handle myself. My family has been told how to handle themselves. Do all of you know how to do that?
Bill Hostman, thirty-six, seventy, Hamilton Road. Uh, I was trustee here, I was first elected in the early nineties. And when I campaigned, I think I brought through Stonegate half an hour, Forest View Estates didn't exist. Walmart was just going in. And, I mean, there was, I think we had about fifty-five hundred population when I, when I came. And I was the police commissioner for thirteen years, and so I watched the department grow. From where we had all volunteer officers and a couple of junk cars that, you know, pursued and died. But I have watched it grow, and I think that, you know, judging from what I see going on every day and the client problem and the immigrant problem and all these other things, we really need police to be there. And I'll be brief, I'll just say that I will be supporting it to the end. Thank you.
One more?
My name's Lori Zunin, I live on Jenny Drive. Um, I've been a mom and a wife of law enforcement for over forty years. And, um, I just, people don't realize that when the officers are on shift, they're not, it's not like TV. Um, there's no do-over. And my husband retired from Cleveland, you know, four, and then he became chief of care alone before he passed away. But my son is also a police officer. And as a mom, that's another thing. Of all of the law enforcement, fire, they have families, they have kids. And for a mom to hear over the scanner when her son is on night shift, officer down, knowing there one man, there's one guy out there, that will never, nothing will take that away. And please try to remember that they are people, they have families, they have parents they, like, trying to care for. All the problems that we have, they have. And like the gentleman in the backside, when somebody's trying to break into your house, yes, retirees are on a fixed income, but they're also the most vulnerable. And, um, someone's trying to break into your house, that's the only person you're gonna wanna see. And what is that worth to you? It's worth everything to me.
This is just real quick, Tiffany Ballow, thirty-five, eighty-two, Hamilton Road. I mean, if, if we put a levy on the ballot, we all vote for it, correct?
Correct.
I mean, so we could vote yes or we could vote no. I mean, it's just a levy, if we don't, it's not automatically gonna pass, it's, it's up to vote. And I, I support it, but.
At this time, I have a, like, a maker, there's nobody else? Just a motion to allow some public comment? Peter Walker?
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Christopher?
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood?
I need trust the comment, that's all. Okay, Mr. Eastwood?
I wanted to touch base in light of circumstances, we may be needing somebody to work the deposit issue. For incoming checks in a few weeks. Another person needs to be trained and bonded, et cetera. I talked to people at Westfield, and I said, well, for proper approval, I don't necessarily do that. I didn't know if you guys wanted to, um, to make a motion to allow me to be trained and, in, in case if we need to have somebody to do that, so that we can.
So basically, it's a motion to have you trained and...
Would, would this be until we bring other people on?
Correct.
I think that should be included in, in the moment.
Yeah.
That way it's clearer that it's a temporary.
I'd like to make a motion to have Doug Eastwood be trained and allow him to make deposits for Westfield. And until we bring in some of our new staff to go to that job.
Second.
Another discussion? Your call?
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Christopher?
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood?
Hi. One more thing, um, in light of some recent public record requests, um, it's become evident that there's reason to have access to our past fiscal officers' email account, which is closed currently. Talked to Lighthouse, that can be opened up by, uh, board action, a letter from the board. And I was, I'd like to be considered to make a motion to allow me access to Richard Painter's township email, his township email for the purpose of assisting with public records.
So again, I'd like to make a motion to approve an opening of Richard Painter's emails so that we can work with fulfilling public records requests. In for the, so it's a specific purpose. Okay, for, for Doug Eastwood. Your call?
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Christopher? Mr. Eastwood?
Hi.
Anything else here? Mr. Christopher? Just a comment.
Um, for the trustees, please?
Yes, yes.
But just, um... I just wanna hit on a couple of points that were, were brought up here, um, in the public comments. I think we actually had ten police officers back then. Normally, and I was, um, I traveled with the police when I was police commissioner, and I did that because I wanted to find out, there were people saying things about the police department. The only way to find out what's going on was travel with the police. And what I found was, the police were almost always there first. And if they weren't there first, the only reason they weren't there first was because we didn't have two officers, and somebody would be on eighteen, and the call was down here. If we would've had two officers, there would've been a lot better, police being there first. And I can speak to you as a retiring. I, I feel the pain, I'll say, of people that are retired versus somebody that's working today is another. But it's, it's safety and it's really important. I traveled with the police, I told the story in here before, and I was out with the chief, and the call came in. And the other officer showed up, front door of the house were open, we didn't know what it was. The other officer could not go in that house until the chief showed up, because you'd never lock in, you could turn the wrong way. And for safety of the police and everything else, you need that, that type of protection. So the chief showed up, he went in, backed up the other officer, fortunately there was nothing there, happened to be the wind blew the door open. But that was a real-life experience, I was there, I saw. So, those are just my comments.
Um, I just have a couple, uh, in relation to some of the public comments. One, the first letter that we've got, and also, um, I think I was Dave Crandall here. I mean, I could have agreed with you more, but the autonomousness of the township. When we have the fire department with the city, and then if you were to look at putting the police department to the city, I mean, you kinda lose your identity. And our officers, you know, they probably don't like it all the time, I constantly ask them to patrol the neighborhoods, look for the speakers, you know, get out, throw the windows down, wave at the residents, know your residents. And that's a huge thing, you know, when you, when you look at Medina's city police department, yeah, it's a great department, I, you know, I don't have any problems with them. But you never know who's gonna be on duty. When they're on duty with Lafayette, it is known in fact that if, if there's a call in the city, they're going to go and back up that area. So, it's not like there's a line, it says, oh, I can't cross this line when there's a police call. No, they, they all go and, and they help each other. But when it's township, we don't necessarily go and help the city unless it's on the proper, you know, proper lines, because they have plenty of officers and stuff on duty. A lot of times, you know, we're working eighteen with Montville, uh, and it's been a great relationship with Montville and stuff like that, to be able to get that support. But then when you get into areas over here by Tostic, where you're away from everybody else, it'll take longer to get support and stuff like that. So I, again, I just, I wanna say, you know, when you have a small department like ours, knowing your presence and being a part of your community is, is very important. And again, Tiffany, I think it was, again, it's just a vote. You know, we're just throwing it out there, we show the need for it. You know, where our vision is for the next, you know, hopefully ten years, I don't, and I don't wanna keep going back at these things. And then, again, when the safety services levy comes up, we can address that for the needs of that. If the police levy passes, then we're not gonna need as much in the safety services levy. But we'll know what our contract is with the fire department. And then, we're also giving an idea on where our EMS costs are coming in. Because whether or not even, they're becoming more expensive, you know, it's costing more to outfit these ambulances. I am on the LST committee, and, I mean, we literally are waiting over a year for a new ambulance. And the cost, you know, eight years ago, you could get an ambulance for like three-hundred thousand dollars. Now you're looking at over a million. You could get a fire truck for a million, it's just not like that anymore. So, I appreciate everybody coming out here. If I can get this kind of attendance, I'll throw a levy on the heating bucket every time. We do appreciate your support. Sometimes we could get lonely here, it's a take this job. But we do appreciate your interest in coming in here, and we invite you to all our trustee meetings. Normally, they're on Thursdays at seven o'clock. This one's just a unique one because we are leaving tomorrow to go to training down in Columbus for the Ohio Township Association and for training. This is where we have a lot of seminars, and then we can, you know, correspond with other trustees in the area and across the state. And it's a great opportunity for us to increase our education, our knowledge of helping out our communities. So, with that, I don't have any more comments, anybody else? So, I have two things left on the docket, one's gonna be the executive session, and then I'll also have this letter, do that next. So, I would like, um. So, it is, uh. The letter is dated January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, Medina Township Board Trustees. This letter serves as my two-week notification of my resignation as the secretary of Medina Township. I am asking that the remainder of my vacation is to be paid in my financial check. Thank you, Mr. Christopher. This is a resignation letter from our section. So, I would like to make a motion to accept this.
Give it a second.
I need to discuss.
I wish I could.
But, Chris, we will mesh it, we appreciate our, you know, service, because that's not an easy job. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood?
Hi.
Mr. Christopher?
Hi.
So, last thing on my agenda, because I bumped it all the way down to the bottom, is executive session, to consider the appointment, appointment and compensation of a public employee. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, appointment and compensation of a public employee. Start it. And it'll be for the three courses.
Any possibility of any action afterwards?
I don't see any action being taken afterward, I don't, do you?
Possible.
So there might be some action, I don't, I don't know, we're gonna go discuss it. So at this time, and again, you're not health advocate here, so I'm not expecting to turn out long enough. But can I get a roll call?
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Christopher?
So the time is now four fifty-four, we are in executive session. Time is now five twenty-nine. Three trustees have returned from executive session, or no decisions were made. Actually, we were back in executive session, we're just trying to contemplate some scenarios with staffing, and no decisions were made, and I think that's on the tab. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Mr. Christopher?
Hi.
Mr. Eastwood?
Hi.
Time is still five twenty-nine, I call the meeting.